This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to make a community announcement one day. This coming Sunday, Messiah is being presented by and sponsored by our wonderful symphony. It's going to be Sunday afternoon, three o'clock at First United Methodist Church on Thompson Boulevard. I've heard about the rehearsals, the community chorus is doing great, soloists are wonderful, and it's going to be a great afternoon, absolutely free to everyone. If you've never seen or heard this wonderful piece of music, this Messiah music by Frederick, George Frederick Candle, it's wonderful, and it's a community project each year that the symphony is so happy to present. And then on Monday evening tonight, that will be our Christmas concert, Hecker Performing Arts Center at the high school, seven thirty. And most of the time, of course, our concerts are on a Monday, the third Monday, and of course, that would be the council meeting. So now there's no excuse. Okay, that's this coming Monday, week from tonight, seven thirty, Hecker Performing Arts Center, it's only fifteen dollars a ticket, but all students are free, all children are free. I'll be there to greet, and we're going to have cookies and punch afterward in the lobby. Our wonderful conductor, Jeroi Marsh, is bringing her kinder corps, her children's choir out from Concordia, where she's director of music. So it's going to be an absolutely wonderful way to get into this wonderful Christmas season of Advent. So think about it, please. Please put it on your calendar. We really appreciate seeing all of you, all of you there.
All right. With that, we'll call this meeting of the Sedalia City Council to work. First item on our agenda is legislative prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Chair, you have the floor.
Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the city council of Sedalia meets to discuss and to make decisions about our city. We ask you to bless our mayor, administrators, staff, and our work members who are giving to the community to make this a better community for all of us, so grateful for their service and dedication. We ask your protection for all of our city, county, and state first responders who are twenty-four seven to protect us often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, which thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these two hundred forty-seven years, and we ask your blessing and your guidance to all of military and civilians serving throughout the world and also here, to bring them home safely to their families, to their loved ones. And let us also try to remember perhaps during these days of hustle and bustle and buying things, there were reason for the season of Advent, awaiting for the birth of a tiny baby in a far-off land who became the most famous person in history. And now as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, in all this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
August.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
Okay, we have a service award on our agenda, and we'll go ahead and invite up Assistant City Administrator Ward to go ahead and win that service award.
Dennis started with the city about five years ago, started out at our complex facility and moved recently, well, last year or so, over to the wastewater treatment, where he's put in a lot of hard work, and we appreciate it. So on behalf of the city of Sedalia and all of council and the administration, congratulations on five years of service.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session minutes. These are the council meeting minutes dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second? Do I have any amendments for the meeting minutes that need to be proposed? Having heard none, all was a favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the roll call of our standing committees. Up first, we have Public Safety, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask the Fire Department Chief, Mr. Er- Chief Erwin, to come up and make a presentation. Please.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody, I hope you had a good Thanksgiving. Only sixty slides, so we'll be good, so. So Sedalia Fire Department, twenty twenty-five, will be on. Back in two thousand seventeen, the city council put together the training chief, training captain for the city of Sedalia Fire Department. Basically, at that point, we really started working on our training hours, our training, the things that we were training on and all of those things. That kind of came to fruition and bared its fruit, with this year with our Class Two certification and our ISO being improved. We are in the top seven percent of the nation in Class Two fire departments, and so your investment in the, that you put into the fire department is what really matters. So some of the key points that we brought up of our ISO Class Two, we had an eight-point-six-three total point improvement overall from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-four. Basically, it was point nine-seven points before we dropped back below a two, back to a three. The biggest improvement in our classification was the two hundred fifty-six percent of our training hours that went up. So you can kind of see on the graph there from the ISO three to two, we're sitting at eighty point nine-seven, and eighty is the breakover point. So to keep that to you, we need to continue our investment into the fire department. You'll see on the graph where our four engines, two thousand twelve, two thousand eighteen, and twenty twenty-four, we dropped down to a three-point-two-three. That was the addition to the squads. We added personnel to fill those squads, but by doing that, we actually pulled one of our firefighters off each of the engines, which took us from four-person engine companies down to three-person engine companies. That will hurt us when we get reevaluated because ISO looks at us as a four-man engine company. We have been able to get around some of that with by adding personnel and having more additional personnel on fire scene, but currently we are graded by our number of firefighters on our fire engines. So you can see that our personnel coverage, you'll see that our coverage points dropped from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four, that's because of continued big improvement in the city. We have gone from thirteen square miles in two thousand twelve to fifteen thousand, or fifteen, fifteen thousand, fifteen square miles in twenty twenty-four. So our improvement, our coverage area is increasing, our size of our department is not, so we need to start looking at possible futures before we get our ISO evaluation again. Any questions on that before I flip through? Okay. I'm trying to do, I know that Chief Erwin's got a lot of slides, so. So this year, what we're trying to do again, as you have seen this slide before, or part of this slide before, we are trying to, we would like for you to consider a full-time training officer and preparedness officer for the fire department. Basically, going to manage the twelve thousand seven hundred and forty-two hours that we need annually to keep our training hours, that is department-wide, we would like to start a community CPR training. I really don't have anybody that can do that because my inspectors are out doing inspections all the time. And we need a liaison to the EMA. We would really like to, we work very well with our county EMA and Trish. I would like to have somebody that is dedicated to working with her and being, if she needs something or we need something, we have a direct line of communication. The other part of this is what I'm asking for is a full-time fire mechanic. I know that we have a fleet maintenance supervisor that knows a lot about fire trucks. He is doing a lot trying to run his department and building and co-, or not building and co-, but the building department. We have a lot of work orders that are open, currently open on our fire trucks, our preventative maintenance for oil changes, that thing are behind, because they are super busy over there. So we would like for you to consider getting us a mechanic that works out of the fire station, that is dedicated to nothing but our fire trucks and our support staff, our support vehicles. We'd also like you to consider adding three additional firefighters to the department on top of the six that you just gave us. What this will do is take our battalion chief, who is our shift commander, who is currently riding on our ladder truck. So he runs the ship, runs his ship for the two days. If anything administrative comes up that he has to go to the other station or he has to come down here, he has to bring that truck with him, or we have to take that truck out of service for him to come off of, and that firefighter jumps to the other engine. If there's a firefighter hurt, he has to stay with the truck, it's either me or the deputy that goes sits in the ER or goes with them to do drug testing and all of that. We would like to take him off of that truck, make him an administrative supervisor on his shift, and put him either in a brush truck or in a support vehicle so he can go do the things that he needs to do at the East Sedalia Station. He can also then respond to calls on the east side or the west side outside of taking the fire truck, the ladder truck with him. This would be much like what PCAD's doing with their supervisor responding in a separate vehicle with the ambulances. If we need a third hand, but we don't want to send an entire truck across town, we can send him in the support, in a support truck. Any questions on that? Okay. Trying to go slow. This is kind of what our staffing looks like with operating with the twelve that we're currently going to be running with. You've seen this one before. This is the breakdown of what our staffing would look like if you added the extra firefighter force. You can see down the battalion would still be at headquarters, but he would be in his own vehicle. So this year, we're also going to ask for a brush truck. Our current brush truck's twenty years old. It is a pickup truck, has a skid unit in the back. We will be asking if we would look to replace that. We do not have a reserve brush truck, so if it goes down. The good thing that our brush truck is, is that it does run as a battalion's vehicle when we have enough people now. We do not have a whole lot of brush fires inside the city, but we do send that truck out mutually into the county if they need it. So that's one thing that we need to consider. Also, the current brush truck that we have, we got off of nine eleven money, it was a Seaburn truck. Basically, the feds gave it to us back twenty years ago, so, and we've gotten its lifetime, we've gotten a lifetime of use out of it.
Can one of our squad trucks not be used also as a brush truck, or equipped as a brush truck?
It could be, but if we have to send that out to a, it's not really designed to get into a cornfield or anything like that, and at the cost of that truck, it does have a skid unit in it and it can be used, but if we have to send it in the cornfield, it's not the truck I want to put in the cornfield. It, we have cheaper alternatives that we can put in the cornfield versus that, one of those squad trucks.
When was the last time the brush truck was used?
Last summer.
Last summer, okay.
Another big thing that I'm asking for is Opticon. So part of our, if anybody's driven through the city on a Friday or Saturday night, moving through the city in vehicles is pretty rough. Opticon is basically, is a response improvement plan. Basically, this is, we'll go on stoplights. It will go on the stoplights citywide, we can put them on our fire trucks, the transmitters on our fire trucks and our police vehicles. And what it does is it prevents the stoplights when it recognizes one of our fire trucks or our police cars are coming. So basically, if we pull out of the fire station on Sixteenth Street and we make a right turn to go to Thompson Boulevard, when we turn, activate our warning lights on, the stoplight at Thompson Boulevard recognizes that we are coming that direction, it starts cycling the lights to give our fire truck the green light, so basically it gives all those directions green lights going that direction, which clears the intersection for our fire truck to go through. It would do it at broadway limit, it does it at every, every light inside the city limits that is controlled by a traffic light, except for the downtown lights on Ohio. Southern Ohio and, well, Maine and Ohio are the only two lights that we designated with those Opticon systems on. So this can go to our fire trucks, it can go on our police vehicles, we can actually even put it on our city plow trucks if we wanted to give them creative ability when they're plowing snow, so that they don't have to stop for red lights, they can continue to plow. And there's something in the future, if we wanted to do it, we could talk to putting it on PCAD's ambulances, Sheriff's Department, or anybody else, any other emergency vehicle that wanted to go through it. But I think that this is probably one of the biggest things that we need to add to the city to help our fire trucks and our police cars get across town quicker. We're also asking for a UTV, we've asked for this for the last couple of years, some things that maybe a lot of us don't know. Basically, we have about twenty-two hundred acres of inaccessible land, most of it being at Cloverdale, uh, I completely lost the lake. Spring Fork Lake, Cloverdale, the area by, between New Core and the rest of that area that goes out to New Core off of Selene, the Nevada property, the old landfill, those areas that we can't get a truck into or a brush truck into, so we are asking for a UTV to help us get on that, and again, if we have anything happen on the Katy Trail. This past year, they had the bike, the trail bike ride, I think it eventually got canceled. We were on standby with the police department's UTV in case something happened on the trail that we could respond out of the city limits to go pick somebody up off the trail. So there is use to it, it's not just something to put downtown to, for events or anything, although it will be used for that, it does have a workload that it will carry. One of the other things that we're also looking at is the amount of acres of static water that we have. Spring Fork Lake, the Lagoon, and Cloverdale, and as many of you know that if you've lived around here, we do have a river that runs through the city of Sedalia. Every time the spring rains and we get a lot of rain, the water that runs down across the limit, they're about between fifth and third, that runs basically the entire length of the city. We get a lot of water in that area, we have waited that water a lot, because it seems, although not, not last summer, but a number of summers we always get, I saw a kid playing in the water, I don't see the kid anymore, it's down the river, it's down the creek. So we were looking at wanting to get a boat with motor and some water, swift water rescue equipment to, to help mitigate that and the stagnant water. The Boone County Fire Protection District gentleman that's pictured there, he was killed this past summer in a swift water rescue accident. The picture that you see, that was in downtown Columbia, and that is where he was killed at, and it was in the middle of the city. So it wasn't out on the big river, it was basically a flooded creek inside the city limits of Columbia. We're also looking at adding a second set of host tools, the big set of host tools. Currently, we have them on our ladder truck. With the addition of the squad and the ability to segregate basically, not segregate, separate the city to east and west, if we had a second set of big tools on the east side, then the squad and the engine on the east side would never have to come to the west side of town for a motor vehicle accident. Currently, our heavyset are on our area apparatus, this would allow them to keep the aerial from having to come to this side of town, east side of town, for that same motor vehicle accident. So basically, the two sides of the city can work independently of each other and be able to function without having more trucks on this side of town and less trucks on the west side of town. So response improvements, so radio monitoring, what this is, is a program that would run on our computers. It attaches, it basically monitors our radios, our radios have the ability to be able to be tracked by the software. If we have something that goes wrong on a fire scene, we can hit a button and it will activate all of the radios, and our firefighters can actually keep the radio to acknowledge that they are okay. It also helps us keep track of where our SEVAs are and their ability to, what their level of air is on those trucks, on those packs. So if we do have a mayday or we do have a firefighter go down, we can see what their air is, air supply is, we can monitor that, and it basically improves our accountability while we're on scene on fire scenes. Any questions so far? Almost done here. I am just briefly going to touch on this, Chief Erwin's got more of this on his presentation, but this is a joint venture between us and the police department. These are unmanned pilotless drones that can tie into our CAD, they would go on the fire station at headquarters in East Sedalia. They have their own little drone that they're protected from the weather. If a shooting or something comes up, that there's a house fire, the drones would actually automatically deploy and go to that location and start circling. The police department and fire department can designate people that can fly them once they're airborne, but again, I will let Chief Erwin, because he is the drone expert. And the last thing we want to implement is the Citizens' Fire Academy. We wanted, we saw how well liked this was by the police department and how well received it is. It is something that we would like to work on this year to do for the fire department. There's not a whole lot of trust in it, but it is a lot of work, and we're hoping to lean on the shoulders of the police department and help them help us out. I believe that is it. Any questions?
Any questions, council?
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Erwin.
Thank you. I'll leave that at sixty-seven slides coming.
Thank you. Chief Erwin, bring your sixty-seven slides up.
Or ask for less money, either way, I think I win. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So we're going to talk about three services that the police have provided and will continue to provide. I want to do a quick recap of last year and the way that we spent the money provided to us by the council, hopefully demonstrate that we take that seriously and that we spend it wisely. So, I guess time to control this now. So we got police, community services, and training are the three main areas that we're going to talk about. I think the council is pretty familiar with the services we provide, however, I do want to give you some numbers just to kind of put into perspective the work that goes into just annual calls. So from January one until November fifteenth of this year, the police responded to twenty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-six calls for service. And those are some type of contact going out from any type of call, that also doesn't include traffic stops and things like that, but those are specific calls. The investigations unit worked, had three hundred and eleven cases assigned to them, and that number is actually down because we make it a priority to try and have the patrol officers handle their own cases. So for a patrol officer to send the case up, it needs to be something kind of fairly significant, they don't have time to work while they're on patrol and during their shift, or it's going to be too much of a burden to the rest of the shift that they're not able to. So the investigations, criminal investigations bureau did three hundred and eleven cases assigned out. The traffic DWI unit worked five thousand nine hundred, or had five thousand nine hundred and forty-two traffic stops, two hundred and thirty-nine DWI arrests, they worked six hundred and seventeen crash reports with a hundred and ninety injuries and nine serious injuries, however, again, no fatalities. And I equate a lot of that to the DWI team and the work that they do, because we have not had any alcohol-related fatal accidents for a couple of years now, and that's significant for a community our size. The crime resolution unit, you're familiar with what they do. Our drone unit, I'm going to talk a little bit, talk about later, but right now, our drone unit is typically more of a reactionary unit. So, you know, if we have fleeing suspects, missing persons, crime scene investigations, accident scenes, crowd control, special events such as fireworks, that is more reactive, but we can forecast that happening and we can be on scene. So the, you probably saw the drones, if you were at the fireworks, that were up in the air, they're looking for building fires and things like that, again, working in cooperation with the fire department. We also use the drones on special investigations, and they go to our search warrants, so we can also, we'll film what we do and we critique, we do a lot of self-critique on how we did and how we can improve as we do that. So I'm going to talk a little bit later about a more proactive approach that we're looking for with the drone system. So the K nine unit, school resource officer, we just started that program, we have a school resource officer at the junior high. Our special response team, which I'm going to talk about later as well, the bicycle unit, honor guard unit, evidence unit, chaplain unit, our training unit, which I'm definitely going to talk about some more, and the recruiting unit, which we'll cover a little bit more as well. So community services, obviously, we're part of the community, community and being part of the community is one of our main priorities. So we're involved in throughout the year besides the regular police calls, special events that officers are involved in, we get as much community engagement as, well, we can, but we make it a priority to get community engagement. Through our DARE program, Citizens' Police Academy, that is in our fourth year of our revised academy, and on our social media platform. So I'm just, I'm going to go through these kind of quick, these are just kind of a sampling of the community events that we did over the last year. The Citizens' Police Academy, the Drone Art Contest, which is our second year of doing that, that's with the elementary schools, and they do a coloring contest and we award drones to the winners, do that. The DARE program, which has been taught, I'd say somewhere between thirty and forty years, I've been here almost thirty, and the DARE program was well underway before I started. And this year, we'll have over three hundred graduates in the DARE program. Dare Camp, which is our third year of doing that, and we had about fifty kids at the Dare Camp, that was another successful year. Drone demonstrations with the schools, Kaya cares, this is a new program that Detective Devois has started with Kaya, our emotional therapy dog that we use and we definitely use for our community events. And the idea with that is Casey Devois takes Kaya to elementary schools and retirement homes, basically the communities and the people in our community, we don't get to deal with very much and have as much engagement with, and gives them a chance to meet Kaya, talk to Casey, and kind of interact with officers from our agency. The Balloon Festival, Juneteenth, every year, we'll definitely like to be part of that, the multiple Halloween event, Veterans Day Parade, Shop with the Cup. Shop with the Cup, the last year, through the donations from a generous community, we had over two hundred and seventy kids that we helped provide a Christmas for, and definitely proud of that program as well. And the commanders in the back, Commander Elwood is definitely engaged in helping to raise that money with WK and then to get those programs going. Obviously, we do department tours, Thanksgiving with the schools, downtown lighting, Christmas parade, St. Cass downtown event, multiple car shows, Mozart festival, school drug prevention seminars, K nine demonstrations, and then business active shooter safety surveys and education. If businesses want us to come and do a survey of their scene, we'll do that and help them set up a good program there. So our training, touch on this a little bit. So every year, we have to have continuing education units through Missouri Police Officer Standards and Training. We have to have twenty-four hours by post of continuing education units every year, just our in-service training, we more than double that every year. And that is hands-on training, it's, it's a stair-step program, so whether it's ground fighting or whatever, we take the progress that we've made and we build on it. And it's a lot of examples of situational training, so when officers encounter something on the street, it's not the first time they're dealing with it or thinking about it. We get a lot of, we get a lot of support on our training program through the city, and we definitely make use of that. So just without the in-service training, our officers had over three thousand hours of training outside of that. So from the Gracie Survival Tactics, which is the ground fighting, we did a joint operation training that we hosted with the Sheriff's Department for civil unrest. The sheriff and I talked about being in election year, just to be, just to be safe and prudent that we would know how to work together in situations to keep the public safe. Data analytics, crime mapping, regional CIT training. The list is fairly extensive, and this is, this is just kind of a splattering of it, but I do want to focus on the training that we do every year. So moving forward on the strategic plan, I've got some issues with our facilities that I really kind of just want to put on the council's radar. I don't know that we're going to have a fix for that, for it this year, but the Quonset Building that's on the police department property, we used that building, and I believe that was the spray shop, is that right, Jack? Do you know what year that was built by any chance, do you remember?
Like World War II. Really, that's when those were developed.
It's been, it's been around for a minute, but we, we use that, we use it for evidence storage, for the overflow from our evidence room, because even though the evidence room's probably the biggest room in the police department, it is full. And there's several things that we can't store in our evidence room, that it's hazardous materials, or it's just too big, or it smells horrible, whatever the case is, then we use the storage in the Quonset hut for that. We also use equipment storage, and we train in there as well. And, you know, we make, we make the best use out of the building as we can, but we have outgrown that building and would like to look at some options to get something more usable for us. So here's just kind of a snapshot of inside, that's the cleanest the building ever is as far as stuff. You see the wooden racks on the left, those are where we place recovered bicycles, and we just did a purge basically and had all the old bikes picked up and taken out, so this is as good as it ever gets, it's normally worse than that. You can kind of see the shoot house on the right, the wooden walls. You can kind of see the shoot house on the right, the wooden wall past our cabota. You have to move it side by side out just to be able to access it because it's tight, this picture doesn't really show, but it's full and we've outgrown the need or the use of this. So I would definitely like to put this on the Council's radar for future growth. And I want to talk a little bit about our Special Response Team. Oops, sorry, I don't know. Our Special Response Team was developed to ensure the readiness for civilians surrounding communities for operational deployments, to resolve high-risk incidents by focusing on deployment procedures, current techniques, and specialized equipment. The SRT trains to stay proficient on concepts, planning, tactical operations, hostage negotiation, approach, entry, search techniques, high-risk warrants, use of chemical agents, and utilizing various special weapons and resources that we've been trained on and have available. In the last three years, the Sedalia Police Department has served 71 search warrants. Of those 71, 33 were high-risk warrants performed by the SRT. So anytime we do a search warrant, regardless of what it's for, we do a threat assessment on all the information we have. And if the score's high enough, then the Special Response Team is utilized. Our current deployment right now with the Special Response Team is very limited. This is what we commonly or lovingly refer to as the Blue Falcon at the Sedalia Police Department, and this is our Special Response Vehicle. It's a 1997 Chevrolet 3500 van that we got for free from the Air Force in 2010. It's designed to transport people less than 15 miles an hour on the tarmac, basically, people and equipment. I'm normally the driver of that and it's not uncommon or unheard of that I'm driving 10 moms and dads behind me without seatbelts on the highway going places. And I go slow, which is why they like me to drive it, because they want us to get there. But we can't use it in any tactical situation. It's a fiberglass exterior, it does not have any armorment or anything like that, and it is definitely not designed for our current use. It, I mean, we keep it up and it would be good for transporting stolen property and things like that if we have something that we need to bring back to the Police Department, but as a Special Response Vehicle, it's definitely insufficient. What I would like to move to is a Teradyne Gerka MPV, which is built off of a Ford 550, which is the same frame of the trucks that the Fire Department got last year, and that could transport us to 10 team members. It has specific features that reduce the risk to the Special Response Team, publics and suspects that we may have to deal with in that. It's mobile cover that protects the entire team. So our current deployment options that I mentioned earlier leaves the team exposed. We have one option to have our response team get to the place that we need to go and it's not well protected, unfortunately. The armored protection of a rescue vehicle would allow officers to get in close to situations and limit the suspect's ability to evade police or cause further casualties to civilians or law enforcement. We can use this during hostage negotiation or crisis de-escalation, which is, which is a common, unfortunately, it's becoming more common for us to deal with, but it's also a common technique that departments that have vehicles like this have used. If you have someone who is armed that's on the street, or even with, even with trying to de-escalate, you can drive up and still have, you know, voice communication with the person instead of trying to have them make a phone contact or something like that. Right now, our only real protection is distance and whatever cover we can get. We can bring this, we can bring this vehicle right up to the situation and deal with those issues as they, as they happen. It could also be used as a secure incident command post for eyes on decision-making. So there are a lot of, a lot of options that that would open up for us. And again, this is, this isn't a vehicle that we really want to have, it's a vehicle that we need to have. The first choice is to have it parked like a fire truck. If you have an emergency and you need it, you're going to want it and you're going to want it available. When it does come out, it's because that lives are potentially on the line, whether they're civilians, law enforcement, or both. Again, it's not one we want to have, it's one we need to have. And there can be no accusation that we didn't do everything we could to protect the officers during their most dangerous calls, because that's when it would be used, that we can predict that these calls can potentially be dangerous and make them better equipped to handle them. And at the end of the day, members of law enforcement are mothers, fathers, husbands, and wives, and everybody wants to go home safely, officers and citizens, and this is a tool to help us do that. Another area that I want to focus on is our recruitment and retention. We have had some success with our recruitment team. Our recruitment team grows to every event that we can that seems like it would be preferable. And recruiting events, just, they're not that successful and they're not, they're not very well attended, unfortunately. And believe it or not, nobody wants to be a police officer anymore. It's not a, it's not a sought-after profession. When I started, there were over 300 applicants for our three positions. And now we make it as convenient for people to test with us as they can, but nobody comes to test, or not very many people come to test. So we seek folks out, we seek them out at recruiting events, you get a limited time to try and talk to people and convince them to come to Sedalia. And what is going to cause someone to come to Sedalia to be a police officer? So when someone does want to be a police officer, it is like a feeding frenzy for agencies all across the state that are vying for these people's attention and trying to get them to come to their jurisdiction, because everybody has the same problem we do. I'd love to ask for more people, but frankly, I can't fill the spots that we have. And we have not been fully staffed for at least 15 years, probably longer. And it's, it is a systematic issue and our folks are, our folks are kind of getting exhausted with it. So I'm looking for, trying to find a plan that we can improve that situation. So on the recruitment side, when folks are considering where they're going to go, the first thing they're going to think about is how much does the job pay? And then the next thing they're going to think about is what's that job going to look like for me? So, you know, the, we've kind of been banking on our culture, our training, our professionalism, our equipment, our salary, which in this area is good. I mean, if we were competing for the jurisdictions right around us, we're competitive with that, but we're not competing with those jurisdictions, we're competing with the entire state. And compared to that, it's clearly not being successful on where we're at, where we would be fully staffed. And intangibles that officers or people going into the agency are looking for now, what type of, what type of perks are there on where they're at? But mostly, it kind of revolves to what is my work and life balance going to look like? And for our people that we have now, their work-life balance surely isn't that great because they're overworked. The shifts are all short. This weekend, there's, I've got an officer on maternity leave and then two officers, well, we try not to do this, unfortunately, with our staffing, we had to. We have two that are in the guard and they're both being deployed on separate times. So every weekend that they work, all the way through February, their shift is now going to be short and they need someone else to come work it. And this weekend, I think I've got two commanders that are working patrol because the other officers don't want to come in and work a weekend where they would normally have been off, because they're, they're, they're working all the time. So the recruitment is hard and when you have short staff, retention gets harder as well. So, and I also just learned last week that Cole County extended their residency requirement to include Sedalia, so they can try and recruit people from here as well. And needless to say, they, they start off higher than we do and they're progressive steps. And again, when you get in with the intangibles, like take-home vehicles and things like that, those are just things that we're competing with. I'm not saying we need take-home vehicles for every officer, we don't, but I do want things that will recruit people here and get them to come to Sedalia, quality people. Again, if we wanted to lower our standards on the people, I could be fully staffed, but we're not going to do that, we'll work short before we work bad. So that, that will continue. This is our Drones as First Responders, and this is what Chief Berland had talked about a little bit, and this is a joint effort that we're wanting to do with the Fire Department. And the idea of Drones as First Responders is they are drones that can self-launch, ideally they would be piloted, and we have, we have several drone pilots at the Police Department and the Fire Department is looking at getting pilots as well. So the advantage of this is some of the, especially for the Police Department, some of our biggest challenges whenever we're going on calls and investigating crimes is they're not happening in front of us. And by the time we get the information and we get there, most of the time after the suspects have done something, they flood the area and then we're basically working it from the back end, trying to figure out what happened, oftentimes with people that don't really want to cooperate in the first place. So the idea of the Drones as First Responders is when a call comes in that we would want Police or Fire Response to go to, especially a significant call, the drone can take off and head towards the point of the incident and immediately start, or quickly start getting information relayed back. Kelvin, could you hit the play button for me on the slide, please? So this is a, this is staged.
911, where is the emergency?
There's a bad crash, a truck, T-bone, a small car. It's on Eastland Drive in front of McDonald's near Elm Street. The car rolled over.
What's your good phone number?
Um, 6602-815-941.
What's your name?
Um, it's Pickett.
Okay, thanks. Can you tell me exactly what happened?
Yes. A gray truck ran a red light at Dela and Eastland and hit a small blue car. The blue car rolled over and is leaning against the stoplight pole. The blue car had a green light.
Okay, thanks. And did you directly see that happen?
Yes, I did.
And the types of vehicles involved are a pickup truck and a smaller passenger car?
Yes, that's right.
Can you tell if anyone is trapped or pinned?
I'm not sure. The windows are broken on the car and I can see airbags, but can't see inside. No one has gotten out of the vehicle. The driver is out of the truck and is looking at the damage. He looks fine to me, he's trying to fix the front bumper or something.
Could you tell if anyone was ejected from the vehicles?
No one was ejected.
Did you see any obvious injuries?
Well, I can't see into the blue car and no one's gotten out of it, so I assume someone threw it in there. The truck driver seems fine, he's walking around and looking at his truck.
Could you tell if any fluids or gas is leaking from either vehicle?
Yes, the blue car is leaking something, but I can't specifically tell what. There's nothing coming out of the truck.
Okay, thank you. Is the roof locked?
Yes, the truck is sitting across Eastland and traffic is backing up everywhere.
Did you see any other hazards, for example, downwind lines or poles?
No, but the blue car that rolled over is leaning against the signal light pole and the pole is slightly bent.
Can you tell the make and model of the truck and car?
The truck is a Toyota Tundra. The car is a Honda or Hyundai, I can't tell which.
Responders are being sent. Stay on the line and I'll tell you exactly what to do next. Do not move any of those persons unless they are in danger. For everyone's safety, stand well clear of approaching traffic. Stand safely away from them.
Dispatch, the Sedalia units be advised, there is a large fight going on at wherever, and then we can have the drone en route while dispatch is still getting the information and potentially be, have eyes on scene before the call's even given out and also recorded information. So it's recording everything that's happening on scene. If it's a fire call, the drones would have thermal where you can see the hotspots on the property of where it's burning. And this is all active intelligence that we can get back to emergency responders. So there's, we definitely see a lot of potential with this program. Some of the drawbacks that we have right now is, you know, we have six pilots that work during the day, whether they're investigations or command staff, that could monitor and launch it up. However, it's not a full-proof system because we don't have people dedicated on staff to just fly the drones, listen to the calls, and get them there. I'm not asking for staff to do that or money to get staff to do that. I would like to see how this system would work for us first, before we invest in something like that. But we do see value of having people on hand between the Police Department and the Fire Department, where we could fly the drones to these, get early, early intelligence about what's going, and direct units on how they need to go to the call. So as we talked about a little bit with the dispatch sequence, they follow specific questions and guidelines whenever a call comes in, depending on what the call is and what they ask. So the caller contacts dispatch. In our situation, the pilot would listen to those calls as they come in to the communications officers, and then if it's something that needs our response, we would launch, they would launch the drone. And the drones, they are in a housing that we would look at putting on each of the Fire Departments, because that would give us good coverage of the city. And it's covered when they launch the drone, the top comes off, the drone comes out, and it starts to the coordinates where the pin is dropped on where the incident is. And that can happen remotely, but it can also happen with the pilot doing that. And then whenever the drone comes back, the housing unit actually changes out the battery, it does it all on its own automatically, and then it's ready to go again. So this would improve our situational awareness, our intelligence, safety and response times, and we can give real information to the officers that are responding of what's going on. Because typically, when we get a call, you know, people, people aren't, are, they're not trained to give information, they're giving, you know, they're usually frantic on what the information they're giving, and some of it's believable, some of it's not, you know, or accurate, and some of it's not, and that's just the way it is. We would get real-time, good information, ideally, if we had officers or firefighters that are flying the drones and giving feedback back to the officers. So again, the challenge is unpredictable situations and calls for service, limited or inaccurate information from callers, and our response times are slower whenever we're waiting on the communications center to go through their protocol to get the information before it comes to us. So these are things that we're looking to improve. So we would transition from a reactionary deployment model to a proactive drone as a first responder model, allowing drones to be dispatched and advanced to ground units. So you'd have pilots dispatch link in communications, we would be able to hear those calls as they come in, the pre-staged drones would be able to activate and remotely launch and then be controlled by the pilot. And then the real-time communication from pilot to responders. So this program was actually launched initially out of California and they've, they now kind of modeled the way for the rest of the country that are interested in doing this. I believe New York just started that as well, is that right, Mike? So it's, it is definitely catching on. Mike just finished Command School and this was, this was one of his big projects that he did, and Mike was one of our first drone pilots as well and helped build this drone program in our agency. So I really should have him up here talking about it, but I like to look smart, so he wrote it and I'm talking about it. But it, but it does, it does have, I think it has some good value. And they also, Chula Vista is using it as a manpower force multiplier, so there are some calls that they will send the drone, and if they can clear the call out, they'll do that with the drone. I'm not comfortable with that kind of step, even if a drone responds, a police officer is still going to respond, but that is where they had built that too. Like careless and prudent drivers, if someone's in the parking lot doing donuts and the drone gets there and the car is gone, they won't send an officer because it's gone on arrival, it's already GOA. However, even if we started the program, that's not where we're at, so. Our goal is to increase our response times and our effectiveness and get solid evidence that's being recorded immediately when the drone gets there. So I think in the city limits, we could have a drone pretty much anywhere within a minute or less, do you think? So that's, that's pretty quick. Typically, events are still going to be going on if people call 911 right away, within a minute if we've got eyes on that scene, that's definitely an advantage. And this is, this is a map of a three-mile radius. Our, our company that we're looking at is telling us that they can go up to five miles, but even three miles with two drones, the two drone system at each of the fire stations gets us well within the city limits for coverage, within, within a very short amount of time. Any questions on the, on the drone program or anything we've covered so far?
Any questions?
Another area that we're looking to, this one isn't actually very expensive, but this is a software remedy for our field training officer program. So anytime we hire somebody, whether they've been a police officer for 10 years or they're fresh out of the academy- fresh out of the academy, we, we put them through an FTO program, uh, at the police department so they learn how to be police officers here. It is, uh, it, our program is, was fourteen weeks, we just extended it out a little bit to sixteen. And we count, we, uh, focus on consistent training and grading in the program. It's performance based, daily evaluation reports that, uh, that the trainees do and they, they have three phases throughout that program and they get a new trainer each time in each of those phases. And they only perform as well as their, their worst, uh, situation that they've had. So, one of the scoring criteria is, uh, driving in hazardous conditions or, or emergency situations. And if I'm driving to an emergency code three as the new officer and I run a stop sign and I don't slow down to clear the intersection, I'm going to score very low. Even if I nail the rest of my night, my best score is probably going to be a two out of seven or, or whatever the FTO puts me at, um, you know, that, that they, they felt I would have scored there. And one of the great things about this program is it, uh, it uses our model, which is the San Jose model that we use. And it makes all of the, all the forms, all the, the documents to where every FTO can see. We currently don't have that. Command staff can see it at a glance. If I'm a trainee, it would rate me on like the, the baseline of how officers typically do in the program and where I'm at, where I'm above the baseline, where I'm below the baseline. And one of my favorite, uh, aspects of this is, you know, we wear body cameras everywhere, on every call that we go. If I go somewhere and I do something really well or really poor, this can take our body camera footage and put it right in that document on my evaluation. And then that document is available for command staff to see, for our legal team to see if that needs to be reviewed or anything else. So, it, uh, it definitely has some, uh, some characteristics to allow the consistency of our training unit and, um, and our accountability through there. So, like again, it's not, uh, it's not an overly expensive program, but I think it, it would help with, uh, with our FTO program. So, again, our, our priority, as long as I'm the chief and I'm sure well after I'm not, is to, uh, community services and engagement. That is one of our cultural focuses and that will continue. Uh, we work with community to solve problems through, uh, problem oriented policing. We definitely focus on, uh, building relationships with the community, um, through our, our social media and through our engagement with the community. We look for situations to be part of the community because we're only as good as our relationship to the community. If community doesn't trust what we say and what we do, then we're not being effective law enforcement officers and a non-effective agency. So, just to recap, on the, on the strategic plan, remodeling the police facilities for improved function, uh, putting that on your radar, advanced police response and services during critical incidents, uh, with the special response vehicle, uh, the use of innovative technology to approve emergency response with the, the Drone as First Responders program, improving our field, uh, our field training evaluation program and coming up with a, uh, hopefully a, a long-term solution to help with our recruitment and, and retention. So, any questions from the council?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
We need an ordinance to, um, authorize an amendment to the professional services agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Hofer Welker LLC for revision of the overall project scope. This is a combination of the aquatic center and bowling alley which were selected, uh, to, with the firm that was selected to do them with, and the same firm had been selected to do the new fire station and training center. So we need a, an ordinance, uh, for an overall project scope.
All right, call for reading of the bill authorizing the amendment to the agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty four two ten. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the professional services agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Hofer Welker LLC for revision of overall project scope.
Second reading.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two ten. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the professional services agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Hofer Welker LLC for revision of overall project scope.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor.
We need an ordinance, um, authorizing an agreement to establish a fund for the care and support of cats and kittens at the Sedalia Animal Shelter. This is from money established, uh, left by Jesse E. White Jr. and Nancy A. White who established a trust in nineteen ninety-eight which in part sets aside a hundred thousand dollars to be invested and for the income from sanctioned investments to be used for the care and feeding of cats and kittens in the name of their cat, so.
All right. Call for reading of the bill authorizing the agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty four two eleven. An ordinance authorizing an agreement to establish a fund for the care and support of cats and kittens at the Sedalia Animal Shelter.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Have you heard none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two eleven. An ordinance authorizing an agreement to establish a fund for the care and support of cats and kittens at the Sedalia Animal Shelter.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Robinson. Up next, we have Public Works, Chairman Hiller, you have the floor.
We have five items tonight. Um, first one is the city has contracted for several years with the Missouri Department of Conservation to include an agreement through the Parks and Recreation Department for the management of the fish in the lakes within the park system. This is a great service to the community and staff recommends renewing the memorandum of understanding to continue the arrangement. Some new ordinance.
All right. Call for the reading of the bill authorizing the MOU.
Bill number twenty twenty four two twelve. An ordinance authorizing a memorandum of understanding to implement the Community Assistance Program for Liberty Park Pond and Corvadale Park Lake.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Have you heard none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two twelve. An ordinance authorizing a memorandum of understanding to implement the Community Assistance Program for Liberty Park Pond and Corvadale Park Lake.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor.
Bill passes.
As presented in the strategic plan, staff was successful in obtaining grant funds to offset fifty percent of the cost of rebuilding approximately a hundred blocks of sidewalks in north central area of the city. The design has been completed and bid was solicited for the constructions since the grant application anticipated using the labor of our Public Works crew dedicated to the project at a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in, and of a in kind towards a fifty percent match. The lowest bid came in a hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-six, sixteen over the amount of the original set aside cash match. The bid's specifications would allow for deducting each sidewalk construction to bring it back into the total cost. However, staff recommends allocating enough local cash to go forward with the full amount to complete the project. Recommends award to the bid of S and A Equipment and Builders LLC for the amount of one million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred seventy-seven, sixty-six. Twenty, no.
All right. Call for the, uh, reading of the bill authorizing the agreement for the north central neighborhood sidewalk.
Bill number twenty twenty four two thirteen. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the north central neighborhood connects Sedalia revitaliz- revitalization project.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill?
Um, I have a question. Do we have a start date on this to start with these sidewalks?
Uh, I believe, assistant city administrator, Ward, did you have, uh, some light you'd like to shed on it?
Chris is online too. I would say it'd be based off of, once we have the contract signed, we'll set up a schedule. I know that we have a meeting coming up to set forth when and how we're going to plan out, uh, the demo of the current sidewalks.
So we have no gift formation out of to?
We'll try to get it going as soon as possible. Probably weather depending and mobilization by the, the, uh, the bidder, the, I'm sorry, the contractor. The contractor is currently doing work in Sedalia and they hope to move to it as quick as possible, but I don't want to say a date and then not deliver it.
Thank you.
But the first part of it is, is our internal staff, right? They're doing the prep work and then?
Yes, we don't want to get too far ahead and take out sidewalks and, and cause a dangerous situation, but we are, uh, going to coordinate the, the demo of sidewalks that need to be taken up ahead of time.
Can we get a list of where we're thinking about starting though? I, I'd like to have a list of where we're, where we're thinking about starting though so that the individuals that's in that area have an idea that is going to start, even though we don't have an exact start date.
We have a map from the design, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, certainly. Any other questions, counsel? Have you heard none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two thirteen. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the north central neighborhood connects Sedalia revitalization project.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any further council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two fourteen. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for a tree resource improvement and maintenance trim grant.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor.
Bill passes.
The city has for several years participated in the Tree City USA program. Program allows us to apply for tree resource improvements and maintenance, trim grants to help us main, manage the urban forest. This year, the grant was, uh, was awarded to assist with planting forty trees in Katy Park and the animal shelter grounds, along with equipment for water trees throughout the city and a filter flyer to provide basic tree maintenance information. Staff recommends acceptance of a thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollar grant for this purpose.
All right. Call for the reading of the bill authorizing the agreement for the tree resource improvement and maintenance trim grant.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Have you heard none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two fourteen. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for a tree resource improvement and maintenance trim grant.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor.
Bill passes.
As has been discussed at several council meetings, the bridge over the railroad at Washington Avenue needs repair. In July, a report was submitted to council for phased approach to repairing the bridge. In order to proceed with the next phase, the Missouri Department of Transportation has indicated that stamped drawings from a design professional must be submitted to them for their approval and that such drawings shall indicate load rating calculations. Staff has worked with the firm that was engaged in the initial report in July to develop the scope of work that will meet the increased requirements from MoDOT. Staff recommends adding thirteen, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars to the arrangement, I'm sorry, to the engagement with HDR Incorporated to complete this work. Note the city crews continue preparation work alongside this design to shorten the time line in reopening the bridge to, to way traffic. Need an ordinance.
All right. Call for the reading of the bill authorizing task order number two.
Bill number twenty twenty four two fifteen. An ordinance authorizing task order number two for professional services related to Washington Street Bridge repairs.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor.
Bill passes.
Final item is, as discussed in the last item, city crews continue to work to prepare the structural components of the bridge to enable construction to move forward quickly as the design engineer completes their work. Staff has identified a dustless bead blaster that would make this progress much more efficient and effective. Further, this piece of equipment can be used going forward for the resourcing of the walls in the animal shelter and maintenance obtained on streets and parking lots. Recommend approval for the purchase of this equipment at a cost of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars.
All right. Call for the reading of the bill approving and accepting the quote.
Bill number twenty twenty four two sixteen. An ordinance approving and accepting the quote for purchase of a mobile dustless blaster.
Second reading.
Second. The motion is second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? What's the lifespan on this equipment? Do you know? We'll refer that to Assistant City Administrator Ward.
They didn't give us any kind of specific date, from my experience, it's usually a minimum of ten years.
Will it pay for itself?
It should, yeah, that's, it's also gets us doing the work faster and...
Any other questions, council? Have you heard none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, two sixteen. An ordinance approving and accepting the quote for purchase of a mobile dustless blaster.
Final passage.
Second. The motion is second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call please?
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, thank you Chairman Hiller. Uh, next we have Finance Administration, Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Uh, the Finance and Administration Committee has only one item for consideration, uh, tonight. The Pettis County Health Center made a request to utilize some of the opioid settlement funds the city is receiving from ongoing class action suits filed by several states and local governments to offset the cost of dealing with the effects of opioid misuse. The Health Department has proposed a budget of fifty thousand dollars to offset the cost of three outdoor vending machines to dispense Narcan and education materials regarding the use of this medicine to reverse overdoses, overdoses, along with an outreach program to discourage opioid misuse. After the presentation, council directed staff to bring back a budget amendment to appropriate, appropriate these restricted funds for this use.
All right, before we go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution and the subsequent bill in regards to this budget amendment, I'm gonna invite up Suzie Howe to go ahead and say a few words. Uh, she's had a direct experience with fentanyl poisoning, as well as she's been instrumental in distribution of Narcan within our community.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Suzie Howe and this is our son Jacob. He passed away in 2020 due to, uh, a fentanyl poisoning, which is different than an overdose, overdose. Um, it, he didn't know that what he was taking was fentanyl and that it could kill him, but if he would have at, or his peers had access to Narcan, it could have saved his life. Um, I have been, um, working with the Pettis County Health Department in educational, um, distribution of fentanyl information. Kids don't even know what that is, teenagers. Um, Jacob was a junior in high school, so his peers weren't aware what fentanyl is, um, and what Narcan is, and that it could, what, how you use it and how it can save your life. So I took it upon myself to go talk to the kids. I talked to all his classes at the junior, at the Smithmont High School. I talked to Woodyer, and now with the Pettis County Health Department, um, we are distributing Narcan bags. Um, I'm not sure if Erica or Dawn brought those to the last meeting. They're just little, um, little black drawstring bags. It has, um, information about fentanyl and the small amount that can be in anything from a fade to a fake Xanax and how kids can take that unknowingly and, and overdose or have fentanyl poisoning. And in that bag as well is, um, a dose of Narcan, which is from the opioid settlement. And so it's given out, um, to kid, for kids just to educate them. In my purse, I carry Narcan. Um, a, a lot of the teachers that I know and now a lot of the, uh, Jacob's peers and high school kids carry that because they have had that free Narcan from that backpack. But I think openly, if we can educate the community and educate our kids and offer this in a free, nonjudgmental, easy manner, it's not gonna promote kids to, to take more drugs, it's going to educate our community. And just like Dawn said, it's just like a fire extinguisher. I carry those, that dose of Narcan in my purse, hoping I'll never have to use it, but praying that I might get the opportunity to save a kid's life. And that is my calling and my mission until I die, is to continue to educate. And so I'm asking and pleading with you to just vote yes, the funds are already there. I know it will take a little bit of money to continue to, um, um, maintain the vending machines, but I think it would, um, not only save our kids' lives, but it would save the community members and it will keep our community safer.
Thank you.
Any questions about?
Any questions, council?
My why or how you, I think it would help the community?
Well, I do have a few questions.
I'm not sure I can answer, but I can speak from the heart.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. Um, and, and probably these questions could be focused towards our Health Department.
Yes.
Um, our, our police officers, our vermin, they already have this Narcan, so that they would be able to use it.
Yes.
My only concern is, is that putting in, in vending machines for just anybody to be able to get out of there. How do we know that the individuals that would be taking it from the machines will know how to administer it? How do we know that they would be able to, uh, be able to read the instructions, directions of what to do, not make the situation worse? And, and how do we know that perhaps we need to do more education as well as making sure that more free Narcan is available? Uh, but there's just some questions about having a machine to where just anybody can walk up to and, and get this Narcan out of, that, that's great. Um, any of us that have children or have had children, grandchildren, how many times have you caught them doing something wrong and when you confronted them, uh, they kinda said, well, you know, I don't know. The, the one question that comes to my mind, or the one instance that comes to my mind is, okay, yeah, this is my friend, we done something that was wrong, that's how we got into this situation, I just wanna get away. I don't wanna be involved when authorities come, I don't wanna be involved when adults start asking questions, I just wanna get away. So we don't wanna put it out there to where that's gonna happen and we still lose individuals, but absolutely, absolutely Narcan is needed in our community. We just have to figure out the safe way of getting it into the correct hands so that the individuals that need it will have access to it.
I'll try to answer all points of your question.
Thank you.
I'm old and retired and I'll probably forget, so if I do, just remind me. Um, the Nar, on the box, and I have taken in my purse the Narcan out of this box. Every box has directions inside that you can read, it has pictures, you know, that you can see step one, step two. It also has a QR code that leads right to a YouTube video, and I've watched it, takes like thirty seconds to watch. The great thing about Narcan is it will not hurt you. I could, it's like a slow-nas nasal spray. I could do it right now and nothing would happen to me, it would not harm me. So that's a blessing because i- if we think, or a teenager thinks that somebody is not acting right and they maybe, they have been in a situation that they, uh, think something has happened, maybe they're at a party or something, they can administer that and give them a dose and call nine-one-one. And then the authorities can come and because of the...
Good Samaritan Shield law.
Good Samaritan Shield, thank you. I may get this wrong a little bit, but those kids are protected, so...
If you call nine-one-one in an overdose situation, you cannot be prosecuted or arrested for a drug crime. It's precisely to prevent the kind of hesitation you're describing.
So it protects the kids, but it promotes them to keep their friends safe and call nine-one-one.
So that calling nine-one-one is just as essential as getting that Narcan to them?
Absolutely, because the child or adult or person can go back into overdosing in minutes. It is essential.
And that would be, yeah, and that would be one of my only concerns, is that, okay, they have the Narcan, they administered the Narcan, but they did not take that final step of nine-one-one, so we're right back to, going back to step number one, um...
It's as if Dawn described that you have a fire, you use that fire extinguisher, but if you don't do anything, the house is gonna burn, you still have to call nine-one-one, but it's the step in the right direction. And I agree with continuing education, um, because I still talk to schools, I, you know, our people have these T-shirts on that we started four years ago that said Nar, you know, fentanyl kills, and on the back now, every single T-shirt we put on there, Narcan saved, because it, this is a horrible story and a tragedy, this can be a lesson that saves someone's life. So yes, we still need to educate and talk and, you know, like Officer Woolery talked about, we need to be in, in those communities, you know, speaking and learning and, and building a community with those children. And so this is, uh, you know, it, it's all, it's, it's, you know, educating, but building that relationship, that the Narcan is the first step, calling nine-one-one is another. But it's also, you know, having these things available and that kids feel not in trouble or guarded by taking that Narcan, but, but using it like it's a band-aid to help their friend or a family member. You know, we forget that that happens at their homes, too. Absolutely. And in, you know, other places. Did I answer all your questions or touch upon that?
Thank you.
I'm not an expert, but I have a story to share, and, you know, if we could have, Jacob's friends could have saved his life, if they would have had those things, I know they would have saved him. So, you know, that's my calling, is to, to plead with you and to educate others and just, you know, to, of course, not do the things with those drugs or the things that have fentanyl in it, but, you know, if that happens, and we know it will in every community, not just Sedalia, that, you know, we have a plan, and this is one step, one part of the plan.
Absolutely, absolutely. More education.
Absolutely.
I have a question, just, it just runs through my head. Do you think it'd be, could be taught to sixth graders?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And here's why I know this for a fact, because Adam, Jacob's brother, Adam, was in third, fourth grade at the time this happened. So he, he's been learning about this since 2020, and he's in eighth grade now, and he's a narrator of that story. He could tell you all about Narcan, and he could last year and the year before. So that's part of, I believe, you know, parents, you know...
Well, I was thinking maybe our DARE program?
And I, I can't speak to the DARE program and what they talk about, but, you know, it'd be my guess that they build that bridge and have an open conversation. Officer Woolery?
I know students in DARE have to have specific curriculum, and I checked the Sarlacc period to see what, uh, I believe that Narcan, Narcan football, is actually a curriculum, but it's just weird and, and how that's taught, I don't know.
Yeah, I know they update it every year, they, our officers up, have to update that every year. I've been involved since nineteen ninety with DARE.
That's great.
That's when it came to Sedalia, chief, in nineteen ninety. But I, I was just thinking, well, maybe they could, 'cause I've always advocated, I want our DARE program to be the leaders and not the followers, so they could add that, I think that would be a plus.
I agree.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution. This is the first item in relation to the budget amendment, uh, approving the purchase of these machines and education.
Resolution twenty-one nineteen. A resolution to the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any coun, uh, discussion regarding the, uh, version? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Uh, now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the bill in relation to this matter.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, two seventeen. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 regarding Pettis County Health Center funding.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call please?
You need to read it again.
Oh, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, two seventeen. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 regarding Pettis County Health Center funding.
Final passage.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call please?
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, bill passes. Uh, nothing to report in community development, uh, moving along to liquor licenses, call for reading of liquor licenses.
We have two new licenses tonight. First one is for Jimmy of Valencia Diaz doing business at Melinda Terrier, Tierra LLC at eight ten West Sixteenth for Liquor by the Drink and Sunday Sales, and Christie Long doing business at Wildlife Ridge Winery at thirty-four seven fifty-one Miller Road in Smithon for a special event for a Christmas party for Cole Camp School at the Foundry on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve in a second. Uh, do I have any council discussion during the approval of these licenses? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Uh, now we're moving along to any missing, any items from the City Council or City Administration? Anybody got any?
I do. I would like to invite everybody on December thirteenth to City Hall from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We are, um, bringing back an old tradition and having Santa here, and, uh, we're very, very excited. We have a fantastic tree coming and we're gonna try to be as nostalgic as we can, like we were many years ago when a lot of us were kids that came down from that event. So I would love to see you guys bring your kids.
Anyone else?
Yes.
If you haven't...
Let's go with, uh, Councilman Robinson first.
If you haven't driven through Liberty Park at night, you should. It is truly amazing.
Okay, now, uh, Councilman Cross?
I'd like to thank, uh, GSC and Nancy White for their very generous donation of a hundred thousand dollars for feeding the cats and kittens. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I've heard, I, I had my hip replaced a week ago tomorrow, and with the excellent care of the Bothwell Hospital, I heard all kinds of war stories beforehand, don't go, don't go, they, they call it Bothwell for no reason. I wanna say this community has one of the best hospitals around, by far the best food. I spent ten days when I had the... I spent ten days when I had my stroke in St. Luke's, and my wife would have to sneak me in food to eat because I couldn't stand it. I mean, you could use their hamburger for a hockey puck. The care I received out there and the concerns is why I'm here tonight. I, I mean, I recommend, I don't recommend you have your hip replaced, but, but I, I do recommend that if you have care, don't be afraid to go to Bothwell Regional Health Center, they, they'll take care of you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Just don't forget the Christmas parade this, this Saturday. Thank you.
Give it a clap.
No. Well, I'm sorry, we're gonna clap at night.
Okay, well with that, we've now arrived at our Good and Welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin this segment, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name and address, and will be allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council, nor is it a period for questions and answers. It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all matters, remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community managers. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up the floor.
Good evening. David Gibson, uh, sixteen forty, Head of the Drive. Hey, I'd like to say Chief Owen, Chief Owen, those were good presentations and we appreciate those, and thank you guys for, uh, the opioid money going for the Narcan. Our community really needs that, and I'm glad to see you guys pass that. Um, one of the things I wanna talk to you about is, uh, today I believe the motion was denied to go back to court with the county. Do you guys stop it now? Do we quit spending all this taxpayer money for no reason, just wasting it? Do we, do we squash this with the county? I would venture to say, well, if you guys sit down with the commissioners, I think I could sit down with the commissioners on everybody's behalf and work something out where they can live with, without high-dollar legal fees. It, it's time to put this behind us, just say it's done, work with the county, quit making a hard on everybody. It's terrible for our city, it looks bad on anybody wanting to build here, come here, and I think at this point, i- it's done. The motion was denied, so I would urge all of you to do the right thing, Steve, Bob, all of you guys, Tom, Jack, be down with this, say we're done. And I would love to hear from Mayor Bothwell this week to hear what you guys are gonna do with this publicly. Um, if I have to make that written across, we can, but I, I think it'd be good for the community to hear from you, uh, not necessarily, uh, our administrator, but our mayor. You're our leader, you're, you're the guy in charge, and I think the community would like to hear from you and hear how we're gonna move forward from, from today with this motion being denied. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Gibson. Anyone else? Come on up.
Renee Vance, one nine eight one three, Tanglement. Um, I'm here tonight, obviously, to give a small presentation for our senior center since we have our gala again on the... Okay, is that not better?
Thank you.
Okay. Our senior gala is going to be on June the twenty-sixth, if I'm mistaken, for our fifty-first, Our senior gala is going to be on June the twenty-sixth, if I'm mistaken, for our fifty-first. And you guys were very generous last year, gave us twenty-five hundred dollars, which was incredibly generous, and we do thank you. So I'm going to ask again. I think our seniors that we have in Pettis County, we have served eight-hundred-and-eighty-one seniors this last year for Sedalia. And it's not just about the millions, but that is something that is incredibly important, especially with our upcoming financial straits that we may be all experiencing. So I would greatly appreciate consideration for that. We do have our mystery box fundraiser going on this month that is going, I lost it, on the, all orders have to be done by the three o'clock on December twentieth. The boxes go for twenty dollars, but they are packed with home goods and goodies for the Christmas holiday. We would appreciate it. The boxes can be picked up on the twenty-fourth between ten and two.
Did you say we need to order those?
Yes, sir. All the orders need to be in by the Friday, December twentieth.
Oh.
And I would like to also thank Mr. Goodson. He is a sponsor now for our next quarterly dinner. So we are always looking for sponsors. But I would appreciate it, and so would all those eight-hundred-and-eighty-one seniors. And we also have a waiting list now of about fifteen. Couple of them are in their eighties, so I hope we can get them minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. Anyone else?
Kevin Stouts, twenty-three oh-two, fifteen. I'm just talking on behalf of all the city letter carriers that we have. We've started delivering packages at six AM now. We do have a problem with dogs. It's bad enough when it's daylight and you can see them. It's even worse when you're out there at six, six fifteen in the morning. People just let them out. And just for our safety, we do have an ordinance on it. We make phone calls. Doesn't seem like a lot of things get happened or fines or anything. But the main thing is if there's a way to make an announcement, at least up until Christmas, we are out there at six AM in the morning, and we do work until almost seven o'clock at night. So it's kind of become an issue, and I'm just trying to speak in behalf of the carriers and let people be aware. They're not used to somebody being out there on their porch at six fifteen in the morning. So if something could be said to announce, try to retain your dogs. Might help us out a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stouts. Anyone else?
My name is Gary Lobal. I reside at eight-twenty-one South Oregon Avenue. I just have a request. I don't think that the various boards and planning commissions that operate here in Sedalia, they always have notice where they take minutes, but you're required as a citizen to ask them for the minutes. I don't think a citizen's staff, if you're doing something for the city to improve it, you should have your minutes printed. That's my request.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lobal. Anyone else? Have you seen anybody or heard anybody? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to remove...
I see a motion for session for legalized real estate, personal, and negotiated finances.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Do I have a motion, a second, to return to the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
All right. We're back in regular session. I'll go ahead and call for the reading of Bill twenty twenty-four, two eighteen first.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, two eighteen. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as eleven-oh-one South Kentucky Avenue from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Nick Wompe.
Second reading.
I have a motion, a second, regarding this bill. Do I have any counsel discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, two eighteen. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as eleven-oh-one South Kentucky Avenue from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Nick Wompe.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any counsel discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.